2017, those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Lees, please do.
Father, who art in heaven, thou be thy name, thy kingdom come, thou wilt be done on earth as it is on earth. Give us this fair and justly, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trust us against us. We are just not in temptation, but the Lord is with you, for thine is the kingdom and the power of the Lord. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a one nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice for all.
First item on the agenda is entertain a motion to approve the legislative minutes from April 4th, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion of corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 21st in reference to the council goals.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion of corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 24th with the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, minutes are approved. Approve, entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 21st, legislative bill 2017, Rules of Legislative Procedure.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. And at this point in time, I would like to recognize for a Councilman Ernie Davis to read a proclamation at the podium there. Councilman Davis?
Odetta Evans here.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
You're gonna get right over there at that podium.
I don't bite. This month has been declared Fair Housing Month, and we're gonna present a proclamation to the Housing Department. Whereas the National Fair Housing Law of 1968 prohibits discrimination in housing and declares our national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States, and whereas Maryland law also prohibits discrimination in housing on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, national organ, familiar status, or physical or mental handicaps. And this law is important because discrimination is still taking place, and whereas the principle of fair housing is a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. Now therefore, be it resolved by County Council of Wacomico County, Maryland to proclaim that April 2016 be known as Fair Housing Month, and encourages all citizens to rededicate themselves to the principle of freedom of choice and to support their policy of fair housing for all, done this fourth day, excuse me, this 18th day, 2017.
All right, on behalf of William Carden, who's the president of the Shore Housing Resource Board, we wanted to thank all of you for your advocacy in continuing the effort in furthering affirmative fair housing. And just to let you guys know that there, we do have some more information on the Shore Housing Resource Board on our website, and there's also a course on the Fair Housing Act if you're interested. Website is www.shorehousingrb.com. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. (applause). Morning, Ms. Hurley.
Good morning, Council President, County Council Members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 53, 2017, to approve the relocation of a forest conservation easement containing approximately 2.13 acres, more or less, located along lots 2, 3, 4, and 5 in the Nutter's Crossing, Section 3 subdivision. Thomas H. Rowark Incorporated is requesting for a portion of the forest conservation easement to be relocated at a ratio of 1 to 1 to parcel 450 on tax map 48, which is also owned by Thomas H. Rowark Incorporated. A public notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing will be held today at 10:00 a.m.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 53, 2017. Anybody that would be interested, come to the podium, please state your name, your address, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 53, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, resolution passes.
Next, we have a public hearing on Resolution Number 54, 2017, to amend the fiscal year's 2017-2021 capital improvement program and capital budget to include the Billie Jean Jackson basketball court restoration project and Indian Village Playground Park Restoration Project. The Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism has discovered that the two restoration projects were not included in the fiscal year 2017 capital budget and have requested an amendment to add the two projects. The Billie Jean Jackson Basketball Court Restoration Project has a total project cost of $70,000, and the Indian Village Playground Park Restoration Project has a total project cost of $80,000. Both projects are to be funded with program open space grant funds with a 10% county match. A public notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held today at 10:00 a.m.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 54, 2017. Anyone has any comments they'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, address, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 54, 2017. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 54, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution 54, 2017 passes.
Next on the agenda is to receive the County Executive's Fiscal Year 2018 operating budget and budget message. The budget is processed as a legislative bill, and the bill will be ready for introduction at the next council meeting. Council will also hold a public hearing on the budget at its next meeting, which is May the 2nd. And this year, the public hearing will be held in council's chambers, room 301, at 6:00 p.m. Council will then hold budget work sessions as usual. The budget is to be adopted by June 1st, but that date can be extended by resolution of the County Council to June 15th. If council is unable to adopt a budget by either of those dates, the budget as submitted by the County Executive will automatically be adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Mr. Strasburg, let's thank you. Got some documents there.
(inaudible). Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm pleased to present County Executive's 2018 Proposed County Budget. The primary focus of this budget is to effectively address Wacomico County's continuing and emergency core service needs. It is focused on public safety, health, education, and infrastructure. Recognizing that both household and business finances are still under pressure, the Executive's proposed budget calls for no increase in either the real or personal property tax rates. It continues the Executive's practice of providing efficient and cost effective operation of our county departments and calls for reasonable utilization of our accumulated fund balance. It also continues our historic practice of matching current operating revenue to current operating expenses while using accumulated fund balance and one-time revenue for one-time expenditures. Revenue growth has continued in Wacomico County. Both our real property base and local income taxes are projected to increase by 1%, generating $3.4 million in new revenue in 2018. This additional revenue is being utilized as follows. Maintenance of effort for the Board of Education in accordance with state formula, support for Warwick Community College in the amount $843,000. Dr. Hoy has presented to council this need, but for the public's benefit, this increase covers significant increases in healthcare costs for employees, declining enrollment, and a state tuition cap of 2%. It also includes $450,000 in additional appropriations for our detention center. This covers overtime for our correctional officers, who have heretofore been paid overtime based on 171 hours and a 28-day work cycle. We're proposing that they be paid overtime once they reach 40 hours a week in worked hours. Covers an increase in our contract covering inmate mental health and health services. It also includes $45,000 for each of our 11 county volunteer fire departments for enhanced ambulance service, $300,000 for airport fire and rescue because of the expiring Piedmont Agreement, negotiated step increases for the FOP in the amount $162,000, and an additional $125,000 to our COAT program, which has been nationally recognized and has been highly effective since its inception. The state has also improved a $302,541 increase in HUR, hybrid user revenue. This brings us to approximately 12.5% of the historic level of distributions prior to the state's redirection of HUR funds. The county's HUR loss since 2009 is approximately $58 million. And therefore, our Roads Department continues to be heavily dependent on general fund fiscal support. Our departments were asked to use their best efforts to keep 2018 recurring expenses level with last year. I'm pleased to report that our departments responded effectively, and I deeply appreciate the time and effort that all of our employees have invested in this process. The budget proposes that eligible employees receive a 2% cost of living increase, which closely matches the 2017 CPIU year-over-year increase of 2.1%. This cost of living increase is almost entirely offset by health premium and other savings. The budget funds the county's approved capital improvement plan as well as necessary departmental capital needs. The CIP and departmental capital needs funded are $9.2 million. This investment will come from accumulated fund balance, and therefore, our proposed borrowing this coming year will be $10 million versus $20.3 million last year. We believe that this utilization of excess fund balance rather than increasing the county's debt is a sound fiscal tactic. You will also see some accounting changes reflected in this year's budget. Retiree costs are reflected in each departmental budget. Additional utility costs for buildings other than the GOB are no longer reflected in the general services budget, but rather in the budget of the appropriate department. We have also made an effort to estimate needed maintenance costs for each one of our county-owned buildings and its mechanical systems. These are included in the general services budget and are identified by building. These changes result in some year-over-year anomalies that are scheduled in Exhibit F of the budget message. In closing, I must bring to your attention a matter that the executive staff was apprised of near the close of business yesterday. The city of Salisbury is considering in its budget a significant reorganization that will, if approved, impact our planning and zoning department. While we have no official communication from the city, we have been told that one of our key staff P&amp;Z members has been offered a position in what we understand will be a city planning and zoning department. We have no details and therefore cannot analyze the potential impact on our organization. As details are forthcoming, we will apprise council further. It's a brief overview of the major changes this year. We look forward to work sessions to review the budget in detail, and if you have any immediate questions, I'd be happy to answer them and respond.
Any questions from council? The itemization of benefits in the individual departments, would that also be demonstrated as a whole figure?
Yes, we've summarized it as well, John. We are showing those costs with the department that they're attached to, but we're also providing a summary of the total cost because we don't want to lose track of what that total cost is.
Good, great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Strasburg.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 55, 2017, confirming the appointment of Martin T. Neat to the Compensation Allowance Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 55, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next, we have Resolution Number 56, 2017, confirming the appointment of Aaron T. Basalamo to Wacomico County Animal Ordinance Review Commission. The members of the Animal Ordinance Review Commission will review Chapter 133 of the Wacomico County Code titled Dogs and Other Animals, and make recommendations to the County Council on how to improve animal welfare countywide.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 56, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next, we have Resolution Number 57, 2017, confirming the appointment of Debbie Russ to the Wacomico County Animal Ordinance Review Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 57, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 57, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 58, 2017, confirming the appointment of Kathy Jo Williams to the Wacomico County Animal Ordinance Review Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 58, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 58, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 59, 2017, confirming the appointment of Tony L. Ekerson to the Wacomico County Animal Ordinance Review Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 59, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 59, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 60, 2017, confirming the appointment of Harold J. Seer, Sr., to the Wacomico County Ordinance Review Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 60, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 60, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 61, 2017, confirming the appointment of Edna Walls to the Wacomico County Animal Ordinance Review Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 61, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next, we have Resolution Number 62, 2017, confirming the appointment of Kimberly Kilmer to the Wacomico County Animal Ordinance Review Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 62, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just want to make it clear that I'm not related to this Kilmer, so just for the public to know, there's no conflict here.
Thank you, Councilman Kilmer. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 62, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next, we have Resolution Number 63, 2017, confirming the appointment of Sean A. Bradley to the Wacomico County Animal Ordinance Review Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 63, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 63, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 64, 2017, confirming the appointment of Allison Marine to the Wacomico County Animal Ordinance Review Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 64, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 64, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 65, 2017, confirming the appointment of Linda Mills to the Wacomico County Animal Ordinance Review Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 65, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 65, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 66, 2017, confirming the appointment of Crystal Weemer to the Wacomico County Animal Ordinance Review Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 66, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 66, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 67, 2017, to endorse a loan from the Department of Commerce under the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Authority and Fund to Manufacturing Support Industries Incorporated, as well as to endorse a loan in the amount of $10,000 from the SWED Business Expansion Fund as a 10% match to the MED Act loan. Craig Technologies Incorporated intends to purchase 90% ownership of Manufacturing Support Industries and intends to relocate one of their product lines from Delaware, including equipment, to retain and expand operations at 2414 North Gate Drive in Salisbury. The proceeds of the loan will be used to reimburse up to 70% of the eligible project costs, and we have Mr. Dave Ryan here with the Salisbury-Wacomico Economic Development to answer any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 67, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Morning, Dave. Would you like to, yes, certainly.
Can we come up?
Yeah, yes, yeah, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you could state your name for the public so that they know who's present.
I'm Donald Hollenbeck, I'm president of Craig Technologies.
Robert Correa, President of PMS.
Glad to have you.
And Dave Ryan, Salisbury-Wacomico Economic Development. Thank you, Mr. President, for having us today, and appreciate Mr. Hollenbeck and Mr. Correa coming up to be with us today as well. They're merging operations and basing the new machining operations out of the Manufacturing Support Industries facility in North Gate. Business Park is behind the Lowe's facility. They intend to create about 42 new jobs over the next three years, and they offer a plethora of different skill sets and wage scales for the operation here. I'll ask Mr. Hollenbeck, if he would, just to give a brief nickel summary on, he's evolved with several operations, very successful in our neighboring state, and we're glad to have him here. If you can just tell us a little bit about Craig and your operations?
Craig Technologies is one of four precision plastic ball manufacturers here in the United States. We're the most specialized of the four, and we distribute our product worldwide. All of our ball products are used in appliances, automotive, pharmaceuticals, they're in your home. We're just about everywhere, you just don't see us. And my father was one of the pioneers that started the company back in the day in 1962 and developed the grinding technology that we use today. We expanded into the tool and die business in 2007. We acquired a tool and die shop that was up in Philadelphia, moved that down to Seaford, Delaware, where our main facility is located, and we've been expanding that ever since we moved it down into Seaford. We wanted to, as part of our expansion, move into military contracting, and this opportunity came up with MSI, and the two operations are practically identical in talent and equipment and software systems, and it was just a perfect marriage for both companies. So we are relocating our tool and die facility down here to Salisbury, which made more sense, and plus the operating cost down here was quite a bit cheaper than what we were paying up in the Seaford location. So we look forward to expanding our operation down here in Salisbury. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
And if I may make one correction, the statutory requirement is a 10% match from our economic development program. We actually did a $100,000 loan to match the state's $100,000 loan in the assistance as well.
Joe?
I just wanted to welcome you to Wacomico County.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming here.
Thank you, Brian.
Forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Hollenbeck.
Dave, you weren't saying that the loan on our part is 10,000, you're saying, I mean 100,000, you're saying ours is 10.
Ours is 100, right. The statutory requirement is at least a 10% match.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're endorsing a $10,000 loan here.
You're endorsing at least a $10,000 loan as our match.
We want to make sure we have it right.
At least, at least 10, okay, I guess, yeah, at least 10%, 10,000 as the 10%. Okay. And now therefore be resolved section that says that.
Okay. Just to make sure.
That meets, right, we want to make sure. I think Mr. Hollenbeck wants us to make sure, too.
We appreciate all your efforts. Just out of curiosity, does any of this 3D printing come to play? Because when you say plastic and all that, that's the first thing a lot of people are starting to think about now.
Yeah, we haven't moved into that field yet.
Right.
MSI is doing presently 3D manufacturing, but in metals, not in plastics.
Okay.
So in average, it's going to eventually in, pretty much into 3D also, technology, yes.
Can you give us an example of what some of your products are in, so, you know, the public would say, hey, this is made in Salisbury? I mean, anything in their home or whatever?
The products from MSI?
Yes.
Or the products from Craig Technologies?
Either one, whatever's going to be made there, I guess.
Oh, okay, well.
Well, MSI will be developing most of the tooling for the new plastic components that Craig Technology will be using.
Our injection molds, our jigs and fixtures that we use for our grinding operation, all that will now be manufactured down here at the MSI location, coupled with the production of the military components that we make for weapon systems for the U.S. government.
Matt Hall?
I was just wondering if you guys thought we need to change the language a little bit in the first paragraph, just because it does say to endorse a loan in the amount of $10,000 from the SWED. Now, further down, it says at least 10,000. I didn't know if that line would need to say to endorse a loan.
How would you recommend that, Ms. Hurley?
At least 10,000.
I believe an amendment needs to be made.
Okay, what would you recommend?
To say in the amount of 100,000.
Okay.
Should we go ahead and do that?
If you'd like to make that.
Yeah, I'd like to make the amendment that we change the language in the first full paragraph of Resolution 67-2017 to say in the amount of 100,000.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendments approved. I mean, thank you, Matt.
And just want to thank the entire team at the county, Mr. Culver, Mr. Strasburg, Mr. Young, we can't do it alone, so throughout this process, we rely on partners at the city and the county level, and we appreciate that partnership.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No. We appreciate you coming to Wacomico County.
Thank you.
We really do. That's what we strive to do day in and day out, is try to increase, you know, the working base here, et cetera. And this looks like a very great project. You could certainly, if we could have a tour once everything's established?
Sure, absolutely.
That'd be wonderful.
Once we get everything moved down, yeah.
You could contact our office, or maybe through Dave?
Happy to do it.
Yeah, we'd love to, we'd love to see the place and see what it's like.
Okay, absolutely.
Great. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 67, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution?
Has amended.
Oh, thank you, has amended. Resolution 67, 2017, has amended.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Are we done?
Yep.
Motion's, resolutions approved, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, we have Resolution Number 68, 2017, to make an appropriation of funds to bury sheriff's accounts from unanticipated revenues in the amount of $91,514.95. The Wacomico County Sheriff's Office has received unanticipated revenue from Wacomico County Circuit Court for seized funds, the state of Maryland for sex offender monitoring, and funds from the government of the District of Columbia Metropolitan Police Department as reimbursement for support at the presidential inauguration. And we have Captain Todd Richardson here to answer any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 68, 2017.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Morning, Captain Richardson. If you could step forward just. How's your morning?
Good morning. Would you like me to go over the whole thing, or just any questions that you have? I've tried to provide you with enough backup information early on so that you could see what we're doing.
I think just a brief overview, not, you don't have to worry about getting too lengthy with it.
Okay. As previously stated, there's three sources of funds that the monies came from. One was seized or in forfeited funds through the court system. One was a reimbursement from Metropolitan Police, and the third was a sex offender registry reimbursement back to the county in a total of $91,514. The first three listed will show receivables from the federal government. That was for the per DM, that was paid each deputy for meals during the time there. They were long days and off schedule, so rather than going through the typical county system, we arranged it for a per DM because we were moving early hours to late hours, and meals were difficult to provide, so we went by the per DM, and that's just simply refunding that. Next was fuel that we used while we were out of county, that's just Phillips, that we used while we were in Washington. A lot of the, our transportation was provided by bus once we were there. The salaries overtime is the amount of overtime we paid in excess to their normal salary, which was the $12,186, that would go back into our overtime account. The additional funds after that point from the Metropolitan Police was $27,366. We would like to use those to cover an unanticipated legal fee cost from a lawsuit from several years ago, and it was back when Travelers was representing the county through Avery Hall, and then not legit. It went over the minimum, and then that amount of $14,539 was an unanticipated cost to the sheriff's office that we needed to pay out of our contractual services, and the rest of that was going to be placed for an emergency roof repair. We have several leaks at the sheriff's office. General Services has contracted someone to come out and take a look at it, they've come with a price, and as soon as I can have these money transferred, they're going to go ahead and do an emergency repair of the roof at the sheriff's office. And that pretty much takes care of the amount that was given by the Metropolitan Police. To explain the $27,000 a little better, it's as if we took 25 deputies and put them on furlough for four days because they refunded their full salary, not just the overtime, so they paid their entire salary amount. That was already budgeted in this year's budget, so we asked that those monies be used to take care of these unanticipated costs that came up. The second amount, from Circuit Court seizures, the 14778, we're asking that the bulk of that be used for Capitol portable radios. During a recent hostage barricade standoff, our cert team identified a major issue with our communications. Anytime we were operating in or around the MRAP, because the MRAP is so loud, we were having a hard time communicating with each other. This, these funds will be used to purchase 15 sets of communications gear. Basically, they're headsets that work as hearing protection, as well as communications devices, and we've checked with the Poly Nutter, and these are going to be compatible with the new radio system that's due to come online this fall. The other part of maintenance contracts was to cover the WatchGuard program, that's the internet service that you see when you want to track a sex offender. It allows you to type in your address and put in any parameters you want, and it'll send you an email anytime that a registered sex offender moves within whatever parameter you set into your particular location. Also let you review every sex offender on the list. Right now, I believe we have 181 in Wacomiko County, who have various reporting times, whether it's once every six months, some it's as much as once a week, they have to make contact with us. Vehicle insurance, we've had six deer strikes this year. We budgeted for three accidents that we would have to pay the $1,000 deductible. Out of those six deer strikes, we had two within three minutes on the same morning.
Same deer.
Separate sides of the county, I don't even think they were related, but right now that account is in the hole due to having to pay extra deductibles. Each of those deer strikes, it went into over the $1,000, so that's why we're trying to recoup that. Capital computer equipment, about $5,600 of the $8,000 could be used to replace our polygraph machine that has gotten older and needs updating. It's basically a computer system, and computers after three or four years wear out. And also to purchase a new standalone computer that handles our accident reconstruction. It would be outside of the normal county computer system, it won't be plugged into the internet or anything like that, it'll just stand alone simply to run the reconstruction software. Can, last one was vehicle expenses, other, we want to replace our civil division deputies' consoles to accommodate the new computers that we bought for them out of last year's budget. It will allow them to operate the MDT within the vehicle rather than as a standalone. And that's basically what we're trying to do with these funds.
Any questions, Councilman?
I just want to commend, all the information provided to us, it was very useful, so thank you for, thank you for doing that, it was very, very detailed. I guess my only question is, for the emergency roof repair, I see in the budget, we have some money for roof repair. How does this mesh, you know, how does that, the, you know, emergency stuff getting done right now mesh with kind of what the longer-term planned repair? Or is there? Okay. You just, you just need to get this done now, and that's?
Exactly, yeah, we needed to get it done probably three months ago, but we were just still trying to find the funds in order for this to happen, and we knew that the Metropolitan Police Department was going to reimburse us for our overtime and our fuel and our per DM, but it was still up in the air whether they would reimburse us fully for the salary. And with them doing that, like I say, it's the equivalent of having 25 deputies on a four-day furlough, which gives us the money to take care of this now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Councilman Kilner said, I do appreciate the detail that you presented, it made it a lot easier. One question that I had, and we had had an exchange of emails, I was still confused as far as the $27,366 that was reimbursed for salaries, is that something that doesn't, that isn't required to go back into the salaries, positions, or line items? Can that just be transferred to offset all the costs? I'm just curious.
It's my understanding that it can.
Yeah, and I would, I would hope so, but I just hadn't had the chance to ask before.
I know in previous years where we've been down people, one year we were down four people for deployments, and we actually moved money from salaries to cover other costs that were overrunning. So this, in this case, instead of placing it into the salary account and then asking to have it moved, we're just having it placed directly where the need is.
Okay. But now, if those deputies were, I mean, you, I didn't understand your furlough comment, if the deputies worked those four days, they were paid those four days?
They were paid out of our budget that was previously budgeted for, yes.
Right, so why wouldn't, when they were reimbursed, why wouldn't that go back into the same category?
Well, then, we would end up with $27,000 extra in our salary account that we don't need to get through the year, but I do need that $27,000 for the emergency roof repairs and to cover the legal fees that were from, actually, two insurers ago.
Okay, all right, it sunk in. Appreciate it, thanks for your patience. Any other comments, questions? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 69-2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, we have Resolution Number 69-2017, to approve a declaration of restrictive covenants on county-owned property known as 11351 San Domingo Road, Sharp Town, Maryland, and to authorize the county executive to execute the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants. And we have Mr. Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works, here.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 69-2017. Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Could we get an explanation?
I will, I will, I want to, I'm trying to get back to where I, where I am. Mr. Baker, how are you?
Good morning, sir, how are you?
Fine, good morning.
Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration in Dallas here. I was Public Works Director through a large part of this, so I thought I'd be able to give the summary. Back in August of 2012, we had a large storm event that hit the eastern shore. I was down in Hampton then, and we had the same rainfall, and it was a significant amount of water. What happened at the landfill was we had a stormwater pond under construction. The heavy rains combined with the stormwater structure under construction caused the pond to fail, and sediment-laden water, muddy water, left the site and went into the nearby stream. That combined with some compliance issues that were unaddressed resulted in the State Department of the Environment issuing a consent order and a fine that was over $200,000. That's about the time I came on board when the consent order had been submitted. We addressed all compliance issues and negotiated with the state. The $200,000 fine was negotiated down to $45,000, and then we negotiated a project in lieu of, a water quality project in lieu of paying the fine. Instead of just sending money to the state's coffers, let's use money and do a positive water quality project. They call these supplemental environmental projects, and it's something that MDE approved, and we pursued in the form of the old San Domingo site that was a dilapidated building. We took, it was about three and a half acres of open space and building. We demoed said building, and we have planted trees as our supplemental environmental project. This change is beneficial in that one of the best practices for bay cleanup efforts isn't a stormwater pond, it is a land use conversion, so that is taking open space or definitely a paved or rooftop impervious surface and putting trees instead. So what this is, this Declaration of Restrictive Covenants was one of the requirements from the state, and that basically limits our ability to go in at a later date and cut down said trees and put something in there. So it does limit what we're able to do with the property, however, the best way of viewing it is, it's like a stormwater structure to not only close out this consent order with the state, but to also help us with our bay cleanup efforts. That's it in a nutshell.
Okay. Any questions?
Was this the old Duck Point building?
Yes.
So you're saying that this was done to offset a $45,000 penalty?
Yes, with, from solid waste.
So if the, if the value of the property is about, about $150,000, the extra 100, would we get some type of additional credit for the extra $100,000 of investment that we're making?
It, it helps sell the, sell the idea of the project to them. Typically, the supplemental environmental projects, you have to go above and beyond whatever the fine is. I want to say it's to the tune of three times the fine. So even though we negotiated from 200,000 down to 45, there was still a project that greatly, to meet that, we would have to be more than that amount. I forget, I believe three times sounds, sounds about right, but when we did the calculations...
It's almost 200.
Yeah, yeah, it's almost, it was almost back to 200, and when we looked at, we also accounted for, you know, the cost to demo the building, the cost to plant the trees, the property, and then the estimated amount of nutrient value. So there's a, Maryland doesn't have a trading mechanism yet, so we use Virginia as an example, and the cost per pound of nitrogen, the cost per pound of phosphorus and sediment, they have values for those to trade in a market-type format.
We're working on that.
Yeah, okay, good, good, yeah, so the state's catching up, Maryland's catching up with Virginia there, so we use Virginia's values at the time to say, and here are the estimated values of the nitrogen and phosphorus that is being removed by taking away a building and planting trees. We added that to the value of the project, so, all in all, this, this is something that we can count towards our WIP efforts, as well as it closes out the 2012 sediment-laden discharge consent order from the state.
So this is going to be turned into a forested area?
Correct.
But no forestry will be allowed, I mean, will never be allowed?
Unfortunately, not on this one.
Okay.
If we were doing more of a, doing a similar thing without the consent order, we could do a forest conservation and then harvest it. If we wanted to develop on it, we could later, or, you know, we have the potential to use this as a bank as well, for if we need to cut trees down on other properties, other county-owned properties.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 69-2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We're on for the next. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn from the legislative session so that we can reconvene as the Urban Services Commission. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, legislative session is adjourned, we are now reconvening as the Urban Services Commission. Morning, Mr. Wilber. The item on the agenda is the shared facility agreement with Terra Firma LLC. I guess the question would be, where are we?
Okay, as some background, in 2008, there was a condominium development known as Village Downriver. To develop these 49 single-family units, the state required, and I presume the Health Department as well, a community sewer system. It was determined that a shared facility agreement was deemed necessary for this community sewer system to assure the efficient, effective maintenance operation and to handle the continuous preventative and corrective maintenance of this sewer system. As part of the agreement, certain funds were required to be deposited in an escrow account by the developer. One of said funds was an emergency fund, there was a maintenance fund, and then also a sewer replacement fund for major component failure. It was determined last year by the Finance Department that this agreement had never been met, and these funds were never received.
None of it?
None of it. So where we are today is that, and I can let County Attorney Wilber go into more detail, but we requested that these funds be deposited. The developer, when we sent this letter, was still majority owner. Per the agreement, he can transfer ownership of said facility to the owners, and he's seeking to do so now because he is no longer majority owner. So it is our intention to, what is the correct way of seeking judgment?
Before we do that, I'm recommending that we send a letter out to all the lot owners out there, explaining to them, giving them a copy of the shared facilities agreement, explaining that the developer now intends to convey all of his...
explaining that the developer now intends to convey all of his, we'll say, right title and interest in this to them, that these amounts are unpaid, and that the county needs to have them paid, and it's for the benefit of the lot owners out there. This whole agreement was put together so that there would be this, if you will, private sewage system in place out there, and it would be maintained. And we know that anything mechanical will wear out and will require maintenance, and that was the purpose of these escrow funds. So first thought is, let's explain that to all the lot owners out there, and then make it clear that if we don't have resolution in short order, that we will have to ask a court to declare that these sums are due, and the county will go about collecting them.
Can you file an injunction? I don't really know the details, as well as to ask you that, to keep him from transferring that responsibility.
The homeowners out there may, once they are aware, I don't know if they are aware of what is proposed by the developer or not, but once they become aware, they may be interested in protecting their position.
But I guess that would be true, but I think our position, it would be a stronger position for us if it stayed with Terraferma right now before going to the individual property owners.
Can we prevent a transfer? I don't know that a court would grant an injunction to prevent the transfer. There's an obligation that is certainly outstanding.
Right.
Would this be a warning to these folks that maybe they shouldn't accept this transfer? I mean, isn't that what it should be? I mean, I remember years ago when a lot of property owners had propane, not propane, but oil tanks in the ground, and a lot of the companies wanted them, they wanted to sell them to them for a dollar and such stuff as that, so they would be responsible. Is that something that's happening here, that this fellow's going to try to put the responsibility on them?
He certainly wishes to convey. He still owns about half the lots, but he wishes to convey part of the responsibility, and that's why I think the property owners out there need to know what is happening. I think that will produce some activity.
How much per lot are we talking? I mean, does it vary?
Well, there's the approximately forty-some thousand number, and a fifty-thousand-some number, and then there is a calculation which needs to be performed to determine how much was to go into a sinking fund each year, and I don't believe, I haven't seen the number for that calculation.
No.
What was the breakdown?
I was gonna say, I mean, but it, the homeowners, it's a number that they may be alarmed if they find out, hey, wait a sec, with this transfer comes this responsibility and that...
I think they would be concerned. I think I would if I were a lot owner out there, and I would be concerned about the future maintenance and operation of that private sewage plant.
If something were to fail, there's no reserves currently to fix it, and you would have forty-nine single-family units that would not have sewer capabilities, and that's a potential serious issue.
Well, that's why we put all this structure into place, to avoid that.
Correct, yes.
But now he's trying to transfer that onus onto the owners, onto the property owners.
Correct.
And that wasn't the original intent, and that's why I was asking, first of all, whether or not there was anything that we could do legally to prevent him from engaging in that transfer.
What was the breakdown here of where this, why wasn't this paid? I mean, wasn't there something set up that before the work was completed, before the lots were sold?
Yeah.
Demand was made for payment, and payment has not been made.
But at some point in time, shouldn't payment have been made before development took place, or while the development was taking place? I mean, you know, if somebody goes in to get a building permit, they're not supposed to be building anything without a building permit, and this is sort of part of that.
The sewage system was built, and a certain number of lots have been conveyed, and I think what was contemplated in the agreement, that the letter of credit or the money would be posted when the sewage system was built.
I think Joe's asking who dropped the ball.
Yeah.
Because that happened. Somebody dropped the ball, and I guess that's the question.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know exactly how to answer that.
We would have to see. It would have been two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, shortly after this agreement was signed, and, yeah, we would have to see.
You know, I'm sure, you know, we've had these things come in front of us, and this should be a warning shot over the bow right now. We need to be careful in the future with these systems.
Yes.
If we approve any. You know, I know we've got something on the agenda today about the east side, and we need to, what kind of deals we're making with people about getting things done.
Is this company still in business?
Yes.
Okay. So they're still currently applying for building permits, or any type of permits through the county?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not certain of that. There's still...
I'm just wondering if there's any leverage that the county has.
That's my concern, too. Once this goes to the homeowners...
Right.
We're going to be very limited on what we can do, and that's why I think it's important that we keep this from being transferred to the homeowners.
Press forward at this point as hard as possible.
Right.
Question for Mr. Wilber. Paul, you mentioned that the owner still has about half the lots that he owns.
Correct.
Can we lean those lots?
I think the county could deny building permits to those lots.
But we couldn't place a lien on the real estate?
We can ask the court in a pursuit...
Right, understood.
Create that.
Is that something we should pursue?
Sure. I say pursue all remedies to properly fund these escrow accounts.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think, I'm trying to picture what kind of leverage the county has at this point, and getting in, trying to file injunction between the Terraferma and the rest of the property owners might be difficult in like a, almost a homeowner association battle. But if we could, you know, put a lien on those remaining properties that have not been developed, that are still wholly owned by Terraferma, might be the option.
And I don't fully understand what the ground rules are for injunctions, et cetera, but it would appear to me that if there's some type of, I don't know whether lien's the right word at this time, but whether there's some type of a compromise agreement going on with this property that impacts this property, to just transfer it to someone else to absolve yourself of that responsibility, I would think that a court might recognize that, but I don't...
Certainly, with ownership still in the developer of about fifty percent of the lots, he's not out.
He's not completely out. That's a good point, too, yeah.
Right.
So he's not, okay, that's a good, yeah, that's a good point.
There's one thing for sure. If there was a failure there, and there wasn't money to fix the problem, they would be looking to the county to fix it.
Probably would be calling each of you.
Yeah, that's for sure, that's for sure.
The question I have for you, if, a few of them, one of them is, do we know what the status is of the facility now? You know, what condition it's in? I was curious, I guess the build-out's fifty percent right now. I was curious as to how much the homeowners are actually paying now for their services. And of course, I believe what was asked before is how much would those increases, you know, how much should we anticipate those increases would be if this transfer were made?
Yes. So, we have not inspected it. I don't think we've had anybody look at it to see its condition. One of the arguments that Terraferma had was that they've had no issues to date.
Right.
The system is eight, nine years old now, so I see that as being, you know, fairly common, not having issues at that age. But it's also getting about the age that we would anticipate belts or pumps to start wearing out if things aren't used appropriately. One thing about pumps is that if you oversize or undersize, you can have issues there if the pump's not sized correctly. So we're right now sort of blind in terms of what the existing system has. In terms of what the, each property, if we requested the amounts, and we'd have to see, all right, every year when they're supposed to be more added, we don't have those numbers yet, but at the initial, let me see, I have those, at the initial amounts, we were looking at forty-nine. The emergency fund was set at fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in two thousand and eight, and the operation and maintenance fund was forty-eight thousand dollars in two thousand and eight. You know, if you talk forty-nine properties, you're looking at at least two thousand dollars each owed, unanticipated for those people living out there already, to just meet the initial amounts, not what it should be over time, because presumably, these would be built up over time, such that the other sewage system replacement fund, that is for major failures and to keep the system going in perpetuity.
Half of that would be, half of that, from what you said earlier, half of that would be the responsibility of those homeowners, right? Because the owner, Terraferma would still be responsible for the other half.
Correct.
Yes.
Are they paying a monthly or quarterly water and sewer fee? The homeowners already there?
I'm not certain. If they have been, that's an issue in and of itself, if money's not been being put back into the system.
That's the question. I mean, if they've been paying this along, why don't we see if we can't find out what that is, and can we attach that to go into the repair fund?
Who's doing the maintenance right now? Is it Maryland Environmental Services, or...
I believe so, but I'm not certain. They're one of the most-used companies to maintain these types of systems.
Quasi-state entity, aren't they?
Yes.
Can we get the records from them?
I would think so.
Okay.
Yeah, they were, they had oversight in the original agreement. That was part of the oversight.
So, what are we deciding today?
I guess, Mr. Wilber was just trying to see what our inclination was, and I guess, as we said, I mean, you said press forward. It's a general term. I'd be interested in knowing as well what our options are.
I think, number one, I think there should be a letter that goes out.
So everyone out there.
To the owners. Yes, right, from the county to the owners, saying, here's your situation. And number two, the county is going to, in short order, take legal action to see that these funds are appropriately placed in the escrow account. I suspect the letter will produce a response.
Has this gentleman been contacted?
Oh, yes.
Has there been a conversation with him about?
There's been conversation and correspondence.
Okay.
No, it requires either the posting of the money or a letter of credit, and neither has happened. He, the last reply was that he was at the point where he was going to turn it over to the homeowners association, and he thought this agreement needed to be renegotiated.
Do we know if their covenants establish that they would be required to pay into an escrow account? I doubt that. I mean, I'm sure their covenants establish that they're a responsibility for some type of water and sewer, but I doubt their covenants acknowledge that they would be paying into an escrow account.
I think the shared facility agreement gives the county Urban Service Commission the ability to lean the properties, to create the necessary escrow accounts.
But for him to transfer that responsibility, I'm a little confused as to what exactly he is transferring to them.
Well, the way that this may play out is, if the county goes to court, I think the county is looking for payment from the lot owners, whoever they may be, of the necessary funds under this agreement. I could see the fifty percent of the lot owners who are not owned by, of the lots not owned by Terraferma, making a separate claim that Terraferma should have paid in these sums for the time up to the point where the turnover would occur.
So we would basically be putting, placing a lien on every lot out there?
Yes.
Not just Terraferma's owned, and then it would be up to them to really sort out...
But our agreement was never with the individual lot owners. Our agreement was only with Terraferma. I don't know how we can put a lien on someone's property when we never had an agreement with that individual property owner.
I think some outreach needs to be done to the people that's already in these houses, other than just a letter, because I think it's going to create a lot of confusion when they get the letter, so it's not gonna know.
You're right. It's gonna cause, creates more questions.
Yeah, more questions and answers. I don't know whether somebody from your office, Weston, would set a meeting up with them?
Yeah, offer a meeting.
And, because I think it's gonna, you know, I think it'll frighten some of them, to be honest with you.
You think we have the authority, Mr. Wilber, to put a lien on the property owners?
I think you have the authority to put a lien on the lots.
For the escrow account?
To have the properties pay to keep the maintenance up.
But this isn't really maintenance. This is an escrow fund.
It's an escrow fund for maintenance and repair.
It's not all. Some of it is unexpected damages or damages.
Like Weston said, say we have pump failures out there, you know...
But that hasn't occurred yet. Other words, if there was a failure of the system, I could say, okay, well, maybe we have a leg to stand on, where they're responsible for the maintenance. But again, I don't think they're responsible for putting together an escrow account to defend against something that hasn't occurred yet. I don't think that's part of their agreement. There's a just on having to pay whatever the maintenance might be specifically. I don't know.
Yeah.
And if they've been paying the maintenance, and it's not been deposited?
We have nothing in the county in escrow.
What about earlier, earlier in the agreement, it says that before construction commences, they shall provide ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars for inspection?
Yeah, that was completed. We got that. They hired GMB to do their inspections, and also provide the as-bills in that paragraph. Okay, but that was the only monies that the county received?
The system was built. It's been, after it was built and in operation, that the problems started.
Okay.
I would like, in that letter, if we could get a chance to review it before it goes out, that would be great, but, you know, if we decide to send a letter, I would certainly like to give them some assurances that the county is doing everything they can to address this with the owners specifically. I wouldn't suggest in the letter that the county may be putting a lien on their property, because then, I mean, you're gonna get, attorneys are gonna be flying left and right everywhere. They're gonna be sending attorneys after the county, as well as after Terraferma, and...
You know what you've got? You've got people that's bought these homes and then probably been paying a quarterly or monthly fee in good faith and think everything's okay, and suddenly they're gonna be faced with something like this, so you're gonna see some upset people. Rightfully so.
But I don't want, I don't want that, whatever that reaction is, I don't want it to be directed towards the county. I think we certainly don't want them to get the impression that we're gonna hold them liable.
The county's trying to protect the operation of their sewer system.
At their expense, though, from what it...
Yes.
But we don't want, that's not, it shouldn't be at their expense. I mean, I don't know. Again, I guess it would depend on exactly what their obligations are. I know what everybody's intentions are, but I don't want to give the wrong impression when a letter goes out that even suggests that we, the county is a partner to the fact that we feel that the property owners would be responsible.
John, hold on. Let me propose it this way. What if all of the lots had been sold, and Terraferma were no longer involved, yet we still had this issue? Would we then not be trying to collect the money from the lot owner?
I still think our obligation is with Terraferma specifically.
The initial amount for the emergency fund and the operation fund, they were supposed to provide that at the beginning, and then like you're saying, at the end of every year, they were supposed to give us the money for the repair of the sewer if something went wrong. Well, as lots would get sold, I'd think that it would be covered under their covenants and restrictions that, hey, you gotta kick in some money for your sewer costs here.
Right, well, again, and I guess it comes down to how you split those hairs with what is maintenance. Is it an escrow fund, or is it an actual piece of equipment that's out of, that's in disrepair?
To me, some maintenance is an individual going in there and making sure that everything's in tune as well, and then other maintenance is repair of a pump that has just worn out. Sure, I'll prepare the letter and send it... Sure, I'll prepare the letter and send it out to the council.
At the same time...
Gather your comments.
At the same time, in that letter, would it be possible to recommend a community meeting with the...
Sure.
Or offer it.
Say, contact Dallas or Weston to organize a meeting.
As long as you all are there.
Yeah. Yes, we'll take care of that.
And I also suggest that we continue to pursue, as I guess you already are, but we have to continue to pursue whatever, every avenue we can to avoid this transfer and to make sure we maintain and direct our focus to TerraFirma as opposed to the property owners.
Is there any, I guess, is there anything we can do to keep any lots from being transferred in the meantime, new lots, for building purposes or...
I think not so much the transfer of a lot, but the building permit.
Okay.
That's something the county certainly has control over.
Wow.
To TerraFirma.
I think somebody might transfer all of those forty-nine lots to some other entity, and then we would...
Right. So, do you put a lien, can you put a lien on the...
Could that happen?
Could happen.
Can you put a lien on those vacant properties as opposed to the ones that have been sold separate, separately?
I would think that the obligation spreads out to the whole subdivision. It's difficult to pick and choose.
Well, if the, if the challenge that we have is with TerraFirma, I would think that the lien would be directed towards properties that TerraFirma still owns.
At least initially, perhaps.
Right. But if you have a lien on it, I don't think anybody's going to invest in a property that already has a lien on it.
So, because this is unknown, well, at least the first two amounts are a known quantity that's owed to the county, can we not just attach it to his tax bill? I mean, is that...
Go to court.
Yeah. I mean, is that the same as a lien?
Yeah, the court would establish a lien.
Okay, okay.
Are we pursuing that?
We haven't initiated any court action.
Is, I mean, as, not directly, I mean, is that one of the avenues that we're suggesting that we're planning to pursue?
Sure. If we go to court, we ask for everything that we can possibly ask for to correct the situation.
Sounds to me like we're going to court, right?
Could well be.
Because we've already gone through all, every other...
With TerraFirma, I think that's where we are.
Okay, well, I guess it comes back to what Councilman Matt Holloway had said before, where exactly, what are you asking from us and where are you suggesting we move forward?
I think initially, it's a letter and court action against TerraFirma, at least at this point.
Okay. And I would see if there's any chance on this injunction thing, it may not even be a reality, but it would be nice to know if we could stop a transfer at that time.
What year was this made?
Two thousand eight.
It's really a shame, because it was a nice package when it was put together.
Sure.
It was a really nice package. It was convenient for everybody.
Sure.
But this is just an example of how you really need to be careful with these things. You know, it's got to be monitored.
So, Paul, are we asking the Urban Service Commission to file, previously you told me the word, the wordage is, file a complaint for declaratory judgment in the circuit court. So, that's our request, that and a letter that would be reviewed by them.
That is our request.
Setting up a meeting.
Okay. Is what you want us to vote on today?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Any other questions from anyone? Counsel consensus, Matt, Ernie, Joe? The chair says yes, though. That would be, if you could, please, we'd appreciate it.
Okay.
It's unanimous. I'd also like to know if we could, from Mr. Young, what the status is of the facility. It'd be nice to know what the homeowners are paying now, what the obligation might be. There's preparations, I think, that are very necessary if we are going to plan to have a meeting.
Yes.
And whatever MES's involvement is currently, to what degree.
Whoever's maintaining it will request all inspection files and so forth.
And like, as Joe touched on, if they're paying in through their, through their bills that they've been paying, their service bills, where is that, exactly where is that being, where's that going? Obviously, it's not going to this fund.
Right.
All right, gentlemen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn from the Urban Services Commission so we may reconvene into legislative session.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. We adjourn from the Urban Services Commission. We're now reconvening into legislative session. At this time, I'd like to entertain public comments. Anyone that has public comments, come to the podium, please. State your name and address and your concerns. You certainly may.
Thank you very much for your time and for allowing me to come.
Glad to be here. Good morning.
My name is Mary J. Marine. My address is P.O. Box 144, Sharp Town, Maryland. And I have been sworn or affirmed, I'm just kidding you on that.
You had me.
I'm here on behalf of the retirees of Wycomica County, sixty-five years of age or older, and their dependents. We're asking that the county council place us back again on the Blue Cross and Blue Shield Health Insurance as currently provided by the current employees. The AARP supplemental insurance is far more expensive and nowhere near the benefits that we've had in the past. We didn't anticipate that this was going to be a burden on us financially upon our retirement. And I'm here alone, but that doesn't mean that I could not have gotten all the retirees to come and we'd use all the county council's time. It didn't make any sense. So, in your consideration, please be aware that it's not just me, it's all the retirees. And we're asking for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions or any comments that the county council may have.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your comments. We don't usually get into a full discussion as a work session under public comments, but we've got this, you know, we've made a note of it. I've made a note of it. Once the council's had a chance to review it, I think the one thing we haven't done is actually get a letter back to anybody stating what our responsibilities are, what our authority is.
Yes.
And to let you know what measures we think are, what options we think are available.
We very much appreciate your time and your consideration.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Marine.
Done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll talk with the chair back.
It's a mess.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? I'd like to recognize Bunky Lufman, if I could, the Intergovernmental Affairs Liaison for Governor Hogan's office. Glad to have you here. Counsel comments. Seeing under, yes, Joe?
Well, I guess we've got Pork in the Park coming up this weekend. It'll start Saturday morning at eleven, eleven a.m. So, it's always a great event on the east side, and I understand there's going to be some more activities. What time is the ribbon cutting, Bob?
It's eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock, ribbon cutting at eleven o'clock, so.
I'm sorry.
Everybody come out and enjoy. It's always a good time.
The tickets are down to three dollars now.
Mark them down to three. It says only three dollars a person.
The only thing I would add is, under presidential comments, attended the Youth Entrepreneurial Academy at Salisbury University, sponsored by the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. That was very interesting to see kids this age, you know, some of them are thirteen years old with business plans and the whole package as to what they're going to do. And it was a real plus for entrepreneurship, I think, in Wycomica County. I know that some of the council members and the executive attended with me at the Hebron Parade, Easter Parade, and had a good time there. And we threw the candy, and nobody threw it back, so. In addition, there was an open house at Purdue Stadium where they showed off exactly everything that's being done. You'll be very surprised when you get there. They've got an excellent board there now that has all the details on it and all the scores and the updates and everything, and the seating as well. They've gotten rid of all the bleacher seats. All, every seat now is an individual seat, so that when you go, when you buy a ticket, you know exactly where you're going to be sitting and, you know, what room you have. So, they've done a great job. I think it's a good investment. I'm glad to see that, that there's a tangible, you know, investment that we've seen that's really paying off. Outside of that, I know that some of the council members were going to be attending the Demarre poultry industry banquet tonight. We know how important the poultry industry is to Wycomica County and the state of Maryland. That being said, that concludes presidential comments. I entertain a motion to adjourn from counsel so that we can go into an open work session followed by a closed work session.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Meeting's adjourned. We'll take a five-minute recess. Is that okay, gentlemen, before we go into an open work session? First item on the agenda is going to be with the town of Willards.